Make a motion to approve it.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. We need approval of June 3rd, 2024 minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve. Second that.
There's a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number one is the IT department quarterly report.
I don't know if he's zooming in or coming up.
You didn't ask him? He's just calling you. We're ready for you.
Cool. Dan or?
Yeah, please.
Okay. Kind of feels like awkward. Is it there?
There should be. Next week there'll be a chair if you guys can sit up, please.
Alright. Everyone receive a copy of the quarterly report?
Yes.
Apologize if you hit your medium head there. Any questions after just reading the brief summary of it? A little more in the brief summary.
Yeah, there's, there's a ton of stuff.
Yeah, so obviously we moved the courthouse back and kind of prepped that first floor there to get everything ready. And so that's been pretty busy for us, but. I can do some produce over here, sorry. First things, e-tax administration. Okay, sorry about that. So using this common task we do in IT like every day, every week, whatever. E-tax administration is one of them. As the buildings have been changing, we're taking a lot of lines out of buildings. And no longer really doing a fax solution. We do fax over IP, which uh. There's a little bit of administration on the backend, making work, making addressing work, moving phone numbers, all that big stuff. Website updates are obvious. We administrate the Carroll County government website. That's DNS records, editing the website, anything that goes up on it, dot postings, all that good stuff. Courthouse signage is just like the signs in the elevator, stuff like that. We have a laminator, so we make the signs. We skip through here. Soon as after recovery preparation, that's just us backing up files, stuff like that. Network updates are obvious. We administrate the doors on all the buildings for the brickies, for our house jail. Go down to some of our projects that they worked on this week here. So back in January, the treasure had a DOT update come through. We did do some VPN updates after hours before hours, get those all done, updated. They're on the new system and it's just a more secure way to connect back to the state. Um, I hold the ICIP education chair position. So I planned our ISAC spring conference. That was just doing like the IT track for the IT agenda. I know some of you guys did attend that. The jail has a speaker system, so if you go up the door and you press a button, you can actually hear what the person's saying. So usually somebody comes up, says, hey, this is office or such and such, I'll be through. We ended up having issues where they couldn't really hear what they're saying to be really loud, like in that room where all the jailers said. So they have the building out of Bluetooth, a headset to it where they can do, you know, their AirPods. We had some that were provided by the county, but whatever, they can hear the audio a little bit clearer then.
I know Maddie loves that. I was up there and she was wearing a headset. It's like, what's that? Geez, this is cool.
Well, like we did a Bluetooth adapter, so you can interchange that set, so it's not one head that everybody's sharing too, so. Um, the STEM project for schools are really fun. We saw like a thousand kids come through just from Carroll County schools in general. I did a hands-on exercise where I had actually a bunch of hard drives from here, old ones, and I showed them how to destroy them. I like showed them the difference between different hard drives, which is like where you scroll or you're memory in your computer. And the importance of actually disposing of that and how easy it is to have your information stolen just by throwing out an old family computer. We talked about the courthouse move. That was really fun. We made, we made sure most of the years now have like mounted screens. Some monitors are up off the desk and they have a lot more room on them. Did some mounts on the fronts of like the counters and stuff. In three, I saw the monitors there for the counter computers. And a bunch of other missing stuff, like cords and all that good stuff, but took us between me and my helper about thirty-four hours to get everything moved in a few days there, but it's done, so. We're still alive.
Now, I think it's a good, great job actually for squeezing it in on over, you worked, I think all day Saturday and Sunday.
Yeah, we learned a lot of lessons the first move and like tried to improve from there, so. But yeah, we thought it went pretty well too. So I thought it was a nice way of communicating. We did, we kept able to go right back to business right away. Not what we want to.
Lights turn on.
Yeah, so.
There we go.
It's being lights on, everything will be taken care of. So this new lighting system you're seeing here, it actually integrates with an IP system where you can go in and adjust it and stuff like that. I can change the timer on my phone for that, for instance, and they get not dying on as fast, so. I don't know if you guys remember Vine. Vine is the Iowa victim information and notification every day network. So if you were to be a victim of a crime or something like that and you're wondering where that person was at, if they're getting into prison, they're in jail, whatever, it'll actually send you text message notification. There's an integration from the state though, so if somebody were to come to Carroll County, for instance, it would send that notification out. So we recently updated the system that integrates that back to the state, so they're able to talk back to us and have their records. We did get some new jet to cruisers. I know they've got them in April, but IT did have the order of equipment for it. We have issues with the resellers who install the stuff. A lot of times they have low market pricing, have a couple grand on some of the equipment. So to keep everybody honest, I always do order the weapon myself and then have the installers install. Buy the mental stuff and then force and finish up the cars. We also recently did a taser upgrade in front of the sheriff's office. These tasers are pretty cool. I don't know if Pingery talked to you about it, but I'll give it to a minimum. They upload all events, so if somebody were to pull their taser and aim it at somebody or just take it out of their holster, body cam gets activated. The event is recorded online and it's in a log, so kind of nice. A big project I've been working on and have finished this quarter. We did a point-to-point project at Swan Lake. The spirit of that was to get Wi-Fi at all our cabins, so like the East Shelter, Deer Ridge and Bison View now all have Wi-Fi in the building. So I guess where they stay, like we can connect their phone, connect the TV, watch Netflix, do what they want. And we're only paying for one internet connection, which is really nice.
That was via conservation. That was like the biggest complaint of everyone that stayed there was their wishing.
So to make this project work, we, we designed it where, you know, it would basically beam internet down to the fishbowl. So we have, you know, these big dishes, we point back and forth between the fishbowl and back up the confirmation center. Has two gigabits of internet per second down there. And then we have a base station like a internet provider we have. Where they're just customers looking back at us, but they're free, so yeah. So, but we can upgrade anytime and add up a building, so. So if we ever have a new building or like the Eagle Lodge or something like that, wanted to have internet, we could get internet there, so. Any questions on this?
Pretty boring stuff, but. What they're telling you, you've been really busy.
Yeah, during this I was out on medical for a month and maybe leave in April, so. What do you say, there's a lot, a lot of stuff that goes on behind the scenes, people don't realize the thing, but.
Didn't the sheriffs get all the dash cams?
They did that this quarter. I'll talk about it next, next one, so.
You were right though. A lot of the stuff we do is behind the scenes and that is what IT is, but we do appreciate it.
I'll make the move.
Yeah, we have his key and coming in on nights of weekends, we appreciate that as well.
Okay, it's in advance for getting this room out there, hopefully in the next two weeks.
Yeah, this week I'm actually working on, I have most of the equipment. I'm on a promising thing, but maybe Monday we'll have a new system here, so. It's fun.
Good deal. Thanks.
Yeah. Are you gonna ask him when he was coming?
Okay, next item on the agenda is secondary roads. And Zach is here, we have a utility permit.
Morning.
Good morning.
Just one utility permit today for Western Power. Washington, section one, just northwest of Halberth. Just putting basically a service underground, a little bit of main line as well to clean it up, as you can see in the map. Sorry for not getting that to you last week, but hopefully you got it.
For our, our Grumsmann?
Grumsmann? Yep. So. Nothing, I guess, out of the ordinary on what they're doing, putting it underground, which is what they've been typically doing, which is a good thing, in my, my opinion, so. Any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve it until that works out.
There's a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, if it's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I got.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is to approve payables. Has everybody had a moment to take a look at all the payables?
I can make a motion to approve unless you got a question on that consideration. I never did get that answered. I totally forgot about crawdaddy.
Yeah, what is it, the crawdaddy equipment? There's two of them there.
One's in Capitol Hill is regular. You thought it was a wood shipper?
I didn't know if it was wood shipper or it was, yeah, it was outdoor. Oh, I think it's the. Mulcher you know they bought, yeah, what do you call that? Yeah.
Mulcher?
I'm not saying for sure. I saw.
Okay, it's his equipment. I figured something, okay. I'll make a motion to approve payables for four hundred and forty-four thousand nine hundred and forty-six dollars and ninety-six cents.
I'll second. There's a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We swapped. Item number four, to approve fireworks display permit for two eight five three one, Highway thirty in Bliden. This is for Nelson.
Yep.
Well, there's a group of them. Kurt Nelson, Steve Chapman, Nolan Chapman, Wade Hunter. And it would be for.
I think it was multiple days. I think it's.
Yeah. Three, the third, fourth, fifth or sixth of July. They've done this in the past as well.
Yeah, I'll see. I'll make a motion to approve that. I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And the next one is for firework permit located at two 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 four, two hundred and twentieth street, Carroll. This would be for Aaron Jurgens. Again, this is a repeat fire permit.
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And item number six, we are going to canvass the June fourth, twenty twenty-four election. There's thirteen of these, you can split them once. For you. So just read what precinct you're reporting on and then the results.
Don't go weird, you're gonna cheat, so it's a little bit.
Right. Okay, you guys want me to go first?
Go ahead, yeah.
All right. Results from Ewald precincts. United States Representative District Four, Randy Feenstra had thirty-one, Kevin Virgil had thirty-five, Wrighton one. State Senator District Six, Representative Jason Schultz, fifty-seven, under vote ten. State Representative District Eleven, Craig Williams, fifty-seven, under vote ten. Carroll County Board of Supervisors, District One, Scott Johnson, fifty, under vote seventeen. Carroll County Board of Supervisors, District Three. Wrighton, five, under vote sixty-two. Carroll County Board of Supervisors, District Five, Adam Schwers, twenty-six, Mark McCray, thirty-seven, under vote four. County Auditor, Courtney Payer, fifty-six, under vote eleven. Carroll County Sheriff, Ken Pingree, fifty-seven, under vote ten. United States Representative District Four, Ryan Milton, twenty-two, under vote one. State Senator District Six, under vote twenty-three. Can you explain to me what does that mean?
Under vote?
That means that when there's not a candidate and there's an under vote of twenty-three.
That means they didn't, they didn't anybody.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. State Representative District Eleven, I just didn't understand if there was no candidate, how that worked, but thank you. Jeff Rich, twenty-two, under vote one. Carroll County Board of Supervisors, District One, under vote twenty-three. Carroll County Board of Supervisors, District Three, Eugene Miners, twenty-one, under vote two. Carroll County Board of Supervisors, District Five, Cindy Johnson, twenty-two, under vote one. Carroll County Auditor. Under Wright, or Wrighton, one, under vote twenty-two. Carroll County Sheriff, Democratic Party, under vote twenty-three. United States Representative District Four, Libertarian Party, zeros. State Senator District Six, Libertarian Party, zeros. State Representative District Eleven, Libertarian, three, three, zeros. Libertarian Party, zeros, sorry. No, you're fine. Carroll County Board of Supervisors, District One, Libertarian Party, zeros. Carroll County Board of Supervisors, District Three, zeros. Carroll County Board of Supervisors, District Five, Libertarian Party, zeros. County Auditor, Libertarian Party, zero. County Sheriff, Libertarian Party.
Carroll Ward Three, south half of Maple River Township. United States Representative District Four, Randy Feenstra, sixty-one, Kevin Virgil, forty-three, under vote fourteen. State Senator District Six, Representative Jason Schultz, eighty-nine, Wrighton two, under vote twenty-seven. State Representative District Eleven, Representative Greg Williams, ninety-two, Wrighton two. Under vote twenty-four. Carroll County Board of Supervisors, District One. Scott Johnson, eighty-three, Wrighton two, under vote thirty-three. Carroll County Board of Supervisors, District Three. Wrighton four, under vote one hundred and fourteen. Carroll County Board of Supervisors, District Five, Adam Schwers, thirty-six, Mark McCray, eighty-one, under vote one. County Auditor, Courtney Payer, ninety-five, Wrighton one, under vote twenty-two. County Sheriff, Ken Pingree, one hundred and one. Wrighton one, under vote sixteen. United States Representative District Four, Ryan Milton, twelve, under vote two. State Senator District Six. Wrighton two, under vote twelve. State Representative District Eleven, Jeff Rich, twelve, under vote two. Carroll County Board of Supervisors. Wrighton one, under vote thirteen. I'm sorry, that was District One. Carroll County Board of Supervisors, District Three, Eugene Miners, fourteen. Carroll County Board of Supervisors, District Five, Cindy Johnson, eleven, Wrighton one, under vote two. County Auditor. Wrighton one, under vote thirteen. County Sheriff. Under vote fourteen. United States Representative District Four, do you want us to say the Libertarian stuff or do we have to?
Well, technically like, yeah, because it's like we're canvassing three separate elections.
Play back up. County Sheriff, Democratic Party, under vote fourteen.
So I guess when you get started with the next part, you can just say, okay, you're the Libertarian.
Okay, perfect. All right, here are the Libertarians. For United States Representative District Four, under vote one. State Senator District Six, David Morris, one. State Representative District Eleven, under vote one. County Board of Supervisors, District One, under vote one. County Board of Supervisors, District Three, under vote one. County Board of Supervisors, District Five, Wrighton one. County Auditor, under vote one. County Sheriff, under vote one.
I got Arcadia Precinct. United States Representative District Four, Randy Feenstra, twenty-two, Kevin Virgil, sixteen, under vote three. State Senator District Six, Jason Schultz, thirty, under vote eleven. State Representative District Eleven, Craig's, Craig Williams, thirty, under vote eleven. County Board of Supervisors, District One, Scott Johnson, twenty-seven, under vote fourteen. County Board of Supervisors, District Three. Wrighton one, under vote forty. County Board District, County Board of Supervisors, District Five, Adam Schwers, fifteen, Mark McCray, twenty-six. County Auditor. Courtney, thirty, under vote eleven. County Sheriff, Ken Pingree, thirty-five, under vote six. United States Representative District Four. Ryan Milton, fifteen, under vote four. State Senator District Six. Wrighton one, under vote eighteen. State Representative District Eleven. Jeff Rich, thirteen, under vote six. County Board of Supervisors, District One, Democrat Party is. One Wrighton, eighteen, under vote. County Board of Supervisors, District Three, Eugene Miners, seventeen, under vote two. County Board of Supervisors, District Five, Cindy Johnson, sixteen, under vote three. County Auditor. Under vote nineteen. County Sheriff. Under vote nineteen. This is for Libertarian then. United States Representative District Four, zero. State Senator District Six, zero. State Representative District Eleven, zero. County Board of Supervisors, District One, zero. County Board of Supervisors, District Three, is zero. County Board of.
County Board of Supervisors, District One. Does there, is, was there one Wrighton?
No.
Okay, never mind. I was looking at a large sheet, sorry.
County Board of Supervisors, District Three, is zero. County Board of Supervisors, District Five, is zero. County Auditor, is zero. County Sheriff, is zero.
Yeah, well next, this is for Sheridan Grant Jazz Precinct in Republican Party. For United States Representative Randy Feenstra, forty-one, Kevin Virgil, seventeen. Nine under votes for State Senator District Six. Jason Schultz, thirty-nine, twenty-eight under vote. State Representative District Eleven. Craig Williams, forty-four, one Wrighton and twenty-two under votes. Carroll County Board of Supervisors, District One, Scott Johnson, forty-five, one Wrighton, twenty-one under vote. County Board of Supervisors, District Three, Representative, one Wrighton and sixty-six under votes. Carroll County Board of Supervisors, District Five, Adam Schwers, fifteen, Mark McCray, fifty-two. County Auditor. Courtney Payer, fifty-two, fifteen under vote. Carroll County Sheriff, Ken Pingree, fifty-seven, ten under vote. United States Representative, Democratic Party, Ryan Milton, eight, two under vote. State Senator District Six, ten under vote. State Representative District Eleven, Jeff Rich, eight, two under vote. Carroll County Board of Supervisors, District One, Wrighton one, nine under vote. County Board of Supervisors, District Three, Eugene Miners, nine, one under vote. Carroll County Board of Supervisors, District Five, Cindy Johnson, nine, one under vote. County Auditor, ten under votes. County Sheriff, ten under votes. Libertarian Party. One under vote for State Representative. For United States Representative, State Senator District Six, David Davis, one vote. State Representative District Eleven, one under vote. County Board of Supervisors, District One, one under vote. County Board of Supervisors, District Three, one under vote. County Board of Supervisors, District Five, one under vote. County Auditor, one under vote. And County Sheriff, one under vote.
Bliden, Richland Precinct. Republican Party. United States Representative District Four, Randy Feenstra, fifty-eight, Kevin Virgil, thirty-nine, under vote fifteen. State Senator District Six, Jason Schultz, ninety, under vote twenty-two. State Representative District Eleven, Craig Williams, eighty-nine, under vote twenty-three. Carroll County Board of Supervisors, District One, Scott Johnson, eighty-five, under vote twenty-seven. Carroll County Board of Supervisors, District Three, Wrighton two, under vote one, ten. Carroll County Board of Supervisors, District Five, Adam Schwers, thirteen, Mark McCray, ninety-six, under vote three. County, County Auditor, Courtney Payer, eighty-six, Wrighton one, under vote twenty-five. For the Democratic Party, United States Representative District Four, Ryan Milton, seventeen, under vote three. State Senator District Six. Under vote twenty. State Representative District Eleven, Jeff Rich, twenty. Carroll County Board of Supervisors, District One. Two Wrightons, eighteen under vote. Carroll County Board of Supervisors, District Three, Eugene Miners, nineteen, under vote one. Carroll County Board of Supervisors, District Five, Cindy Johnson, eighteen, under vote two. County Auditor, under vote twenty. Libertarian Party. United States Representative.
Are you forgetting the sheriff?
Carroll County Sheriff. Oh, thank you. Let's just skip that one. That's all right. Thank you. Kenneth Pingree, one oh two, Wrighton one, under vote nine. Libertarian, United States Representative District Four. Under vote three. State Senator District Six, David M. Davis, one, under vote two. State Representative District Eleven, under vote three. Carroll County, County Board of Supervisors, District One, three under vote. County Board of Supervisors, District Three, three under vote. County Board of Supervisors, District Five, Wrighton two, under vote one. County Auditor, under vote three. And County Sheriff, Wrighton one, under vote two.
Carroll Ward Four. United States Representative District Four, Randy Feenstra, sixty-one, Kevin Virgil, thirty-eight, under vote ten. State Senator District Six, Jason Schultz, seventy-nine, Wrighton one, under vote twenty-nine. State Representative District Eleven, Craig Williams, eighty-five, under vote twenty-four. Carroll County Board of Supervisors, District One, Scott Johnson, eighty-two, Wrighton one, under vote twenty-seven. Carroll County Board of Supervisors, District Three. Wrighton five, under vote one hundred and four. Carroll County Board of Supervisors, District Five, Adam Schwers, forty-five, Mark McCray. Adam Schwerz, forty-five, Mark McCray, sixty, under vote four. Carroll County Auditor, Courtney Payer, eighty-five, under vote twenty-four. Carroll County Sheriff, Kim Pingery, ninety, under vote nineteen. Uh, Democratic Party. Ryan Milton, twenty-one, right in one, under vote three. State Senator District Six. Right in one, under vote twenty-four. State Representative District Eleven. Jeff Rich, twenty-one, under vote four. Carroll County Board of Supervisors, District One. Uh, right in one, under vote twenty-four. Carroll County Board of Supervisors, District Three, Eugene Miners, twenty. Right in one, under vote four. Carroll County Board of Supervisors, District Five, Cindy Johnson, twenty-two, under vote three. Carroll County Auditor. Right in one, under vote twenty-four. Carroll County Sheriff. Right in two, under vote twenty-three. And Libertarian Party is all goose eggs on this one.
All right, Carroll Ward One, in part of Grant Township. Uh, Republican Party. United States Representative District Four, Randy Beanstra, hundred and twelve, Kevin Virgil, fifty-four, under vote twenty-two. State Senator District Six. Jason Schultz, a hundred and forty-one, right in two, under vote forty-five. State Representative District Eleven. Craig Williams, one forty-two, right in one, under vote forty-five. County Board of Supervisors, District One, Scott Johnson, a hundred and thirty-eight, right in two, under vote forty-eight. County Board of Supervisors, District Three, had right in three, under vote a hundred and eighty-five. County Board of Supervisors, District Five, Adam Schwerz, forty-three, Mark McCray, a hundred and forty-three, under vote one, over vote one. County Auditor. Uh, Courtney Payer, a hundred and fifty-three, right in two, under vote thirty-three. County Sheriff. Ken Pingery, a hundred and sixty-two, right in three, under vote twenty-three. For the Democratic Party, United States Representative District Four, Ryan Milton, seventeen, right in one, under vote two. State Senator District Six. Uh, right in one, under vote nineteen. State Representative District Eleven, Jeff Rich, eighteen, under vote two. County Board of Supervisors, District One. Uh. Right in one, under vote nineteen. County Board of Supervisors, District Three. Eugene Miners, twenty. County Board of Supervisors, District Five, Cindy Johnson, seventeen, under vote three. County Auditor. Uh, right in one, under vote nineteen. County Sheriff. Right in one, under vote nineteen. Libertarian Party, United States Representatives, United States Representative District Four, under vote three. United States, or State Senator District Six. David M. Davis, one, under vote two. State Representative District Eleven, under vote three. County Board of Supervisors, District One, right in two, under vote. One. County Board of Supervisors, District Three, under vote three. County Board of Supervisors, District Five. Under vote three. County Auditor, under vote three. County Sheriff, under vote three.
Next, Union Precinct. On the Republican Party. United States Representative District Four, Randy Beanstra, twenty-six, Kevin Virgil, twenty. Four under vote, one over vote. Four under vote, one over vote. State Senator District Six, Representative, Jason Schultz, forty-one, one right in, nine under vote. State Representative District Eleven. Frank Williams, forty-one, ten under vote. County Board of Supervisors, District One, Scott Johnson, forty-one, ten under vote. County Board of Supervisors, District Three. Fifty-one under vote. Carroll County Board of Supervisors, District Five, Adam Schwerz, two, Mark McCray, forty-nine. County Auditor. Courtney Payer, thirty-three, eight under vote. Turn the page. Turn the page. Okay, next is, uh, Carroll County Sheriff. Uh, Ken Pingery, forty-nine, two under votes. The Democratic Party, United States Representative District Four, Ryan Milton, seven. State Senator District Six. Right in votes, one, six under votes. State Representative District Eleven. Jeff Rich, seven. County Board of Supervisors, District One, seven under vote. Carroll County Board of Supervisors, District Three. Eugene Miners, seven. Carroll County Board of Supervisors, District Five, uh, Cindy Johnson, seven. County Auditor. Uh, one right in, and six under vote. Carroll County Sheriff. One right in, and six under vote. For Libertarian Party. Uh, for State Rep, United States Representative District Four, one under vote. Uh, State Senator District Six. Mike David Davidson, one. State Representative District Eleven, one under vote. Carroll County Board of Supervisors, District One, one under votes. Uh, Supervisors, District Three, one under vote. Supervisors, District Five, Supervisor, one under vote. County Auditor, one under vote, and County Sheriff, one under vote.
Pleasant Valley, Newton Precinct. Republican Party. United States Representative District Four, Randy Beanstra, fifty-seven, Kevin Virgil, nineteen, under vote seven. State Senator District Six, Jason Schultz, sixty-one, under vote twenty-two. State Representative District Eleven, Craig Williams, sixty-five, under vote eighteen. Carroll County Board of Supervisors, District One, Scott Johnson, fifty-nine, under vote twenty-four. Carroll County Board of Supervisors, District Three. Eighty-three under vote. Carroll County Board of Supervisors, District Five, Adam Schwerz, eight. Mark McCray, seventy-five. County Auditor, Courtney Payer, sixty-two. Right in one, under vote twenty. Carroll County Sheriff. Ken Pingery, seventy-six, and under vote seven. Democratic Party, the United States Representative District Four, Ryan Milton, one. State Senator District Six. Under vote one. State Representative District Eleven, Jeff Rich, one. Carroll County, or County Board of Supervisors, District One, under vote one. Carroll County Board of Supervisors, District Three, Eugene Miners, one. Carroll County Board of Supervisors, District Five, Cindy Johnson, one. County Auditor, under vote one. And. The County Sheriff, under vote one. Libertarian Party, we have zeros across.
Um, Eden Precinct. On the Republican side. For United States Representative District Four, Randy Beanstra, thirty-four, Kevin Virgil, twenty. State Senator District Six, Jason Schultz, thirty-eight, under vote sixteen. State Representative District Eleven. Uh, Craig Williams, forty, under vote fourteen. Carroll County Board of Supervisors, District One, Scott Johnson, thirty-nine, under vote fifteen. Carroll County Board of Supervisors, District Three. I don't know. Right in three, under vote fifty-one. Carroll County Board of Supervisors, District Five, Adam Schwerz, twelve, Mark McCray, forty-two. Carroll County Auditor, Courtney Payer, forty-two, under vote twelve. Carroll County Sheriff, Ken Pingery, forty-eight, under vote six. Um. Switching to Democratic Party. United States Representative District Four, Ryan Milton, eight, under vote one. State Senator District Six. Under vote nine. State Representative District Eleven. Jeff Rich, eight, under vote one. Carroll County Board of Supervisors. Under vote nine, I'm sorry, District One. Um, Carroll County Board of Supervisors, District Three, Eugene Miners, eight, under vote one. Carroll County Board of Supervisors, District Five, Cindy Johnson, seven, under vote two. Carroll County Auditor. Under vote nine. Carroll County Sheriff. Under vote nine, for Ken Pingery, or I'm sorry, under, yes, under vote. Um, United States Libertarian Party, District Four. Um, right in one. State Senator District Six. Chad Davis. One. State Representative District Eleven, right in one. Carroll County Board of Supervisors, under vote one. District One. Um, Carroll County Board of Supervisors, District Three, under vote one. Carroll County Auditor, under vote one. Carroll County Sheriff, under vote one.
This is Carroll Ward Two, North Ave, Maple River. For the Republican Party, United States Representative District Four, Randy Beanstra, hundred and eleven, Kevin Virgil, forty-one, right in one, under vote fourteen. State Senator District Six. Jason Schultz, a hundred and twenty-four, right in two, under vote forty-one. State Representative District Eleven. Craig Williams, a hundred and twenty-one. Right in two, under vote forty-four. County Board of Supervisors, District One. Scott Johnson, a hundred and twenty-six, right in one, under vote forty. County Su, County Board of Supervisors, District Three. Uh, right in four, hundred, uh, under vote a hundred and sixty-three. County Board of Supervisors, District Five, Adam Schwerz, fifty. Mark McCray, a hundred and fifteen, under vote two. County Auditor, Courtney Payer, a hundred and thirty, right in two, under vote thirty-five. County Sheriff, Ken Pingery, a hundred and forty, under vote twenty-seven. For the Democrat Party. United States Representative District Four, Ryan Milton, twenty-five, under vote seven. State Senator District Six. Right in three, under vote twenty-nine. State Representative District Eleven, Jeff Rich, twenty-four, under vote eight. County Board of Supervisors, District One. Right in two, under vote thirty. County Board of Supervisors, District Three, Eugene Miners, twenty-nine, right in one, under vote two. County Board of Supervisors, District Five, Cindy Johnson, twenty-five, right in one, under vote six. County Auditor. Right in two, under vote thirty. The County Sheriff was right in three, under vote twenty-nine. The Libertarian Party, United States Representative District Four. Under vote one. State Senator District Six, David Da, David Davis, one. State Representative District Eleven, under vote one. County Board of Supervisors, District One, under vote one. County Board of Supervisors, District Three, under vote one. County Board of Supervisors, District Five, right in one. County Auditor, under vote one, and County Sheriff, right in one.
Hey, Washington Rose Hill Precinct. The Republican Party. United States Representative District Four, Randy Beanstra, twenty-five, Kevin Virgil, twenty-one, two under vote. State Senator District Six, Jason Schultz, thirty, eighteen under vote. State Representative District Eleven. Craig Williams, thirty-four, under vote fourteen. County Board of Supervisors, District. Uh, one. Scott Johnson, thirty-one, under vote seventeen. County Board of Supervisors, District Three, right in one, forty-seven under vote. County Board of Supervisors, District Five, Adam Schwerz, eleven, Mark McCray, thirty-seven. County Auditor, Courtney Payer, thirty-seven, eleven under vote. County Sheriff. Ken Pingery, forty-three, five under vote. In the Democratic Party, the United States Representative District Four, Ryan Milton, nine. State Senator District Six. Right in votes, one, eight under votes. State Representative District Eleven. Jeff Rich, nine. County Board of Supervisors, District One, nine under votes. Carroll County Board of Supervisors, District Three. Eugene Miners, seven, under vote two. County Board of Supervisors, District Five. Cindy Johnson, eight, one under vote. County Auditor. Nine under votes. County Sheriff. Nine under votes. Libertarian Party. For State, United States Representative District Four, one right in, two under votes. State Senator District Six, David Da, David Davidson, two, and one under vote. State Representative District Eleven, three under votes. For County Board of Supervisors, District One, one right in, two under votes. County Board of Supervisors, District Three, one right in. Two under vote. County Board of Supervisors, District Five. Five, or three under votes. County Auditor, three under votes, and County Sheriff, three under votes. And I get two years older, and I am some lucky one to draw the fourth one. Next is, uh, Weatham Neese Precinct. Uh. Republican Party. For United States Representative District Four, Randy Beanstra, sixty-two, Kevin Virgil, twenty-two, seven under votes. Republic, uh, Jake, uh, State Senator District Six, Jason Schultz, sixty-four, twenty-seven under votes. State Representative District Eleven, Williams, sixty-four, twenty-seven under votes. For County Board of Supervisors, District One, Scott Johnson, sixty, under votes thirty-one. County Board of Supervisors, District Three. Three right in, eighty-eight under votes. County Board of Supervisors, District Five, Adam Schwerz, thirty-six, Mark McCray, fifty-three, two under votes. County, um. For Republic, for County Auditor, Courtney Payer, sixty-five, twenty-six under votes. Sheriff. Ken Pingery, seventy-five, sixteen under votes. United States Districts. Representative District Four, Ryan Milton, six. State Senator District Six, six under votes. State Representative District Eleven, Jeff Rich, six. Carroll County Board of Supervisors, District One, six under votes. County Board of Supervisors, District Three, Eugene Miners, six. County Board of Supervisors, District Five, Cindy Johnson, six. County Auditor, six under votes. Sheriff. Was six under votes. Libertarian Party. These were all zeros on the rest.
But I have-
Thanks, Jean.
If you remember, we have several of these to sign, so I hope you want to do that after the meeting, because I'm taking a minute. Um, I just wanted to note that there were no provisional ballots. We're supposed to make note of that if there are any. Um, and then, um, also want to make note of what offices there was not a candidate nominated for each party, so everybody's aware. So for the Democrats, we have. No candidate. Elected or nominated, sorry, for the County Board of Supervisors, District One, County Sheriff, and County Auditor. Okay. Then for the Republican Party, there was no nomination for Board of Supervisors, District Three. And Libertarian, and I'll go into this in a minute, because it's kind of confusing, but the only office that there wasn't a Libertarian county candidate nominated was the Auditor. And I'll explain that in a second. So I'm going to just make a list of who was nominated. For record. Um, so County Board of Supervisors, District One, Republican, Scott Johnson. County Board of Supervisors, District Five, Republican, Mark McCray. County Auditor, Republican, Courtney Payer. County Sheriff, Republican, Kenneth E. Pingery. And then for the Democrats, we have County Board of Supervisor, District Three, Democrat, Eugene Miners. Board Supervisor, District Five, Democrat, Cindy Johnson. And I'm going to get into the Libertarians. County Board of Supervisors, District One, Libertarian, Mark McCray. Uh, Board Supervisor, District Three, Libertarian, Mark McCray. Board of Supervisor, District Five, Libertarian, Mark McCray, and County Sheriff, Libertarian, Kenneth E. Pingery. So, um, what happened is, since we've never had a Libertarian county candidate, there's no basis to go for percentage-wise of how many votes they need to be nominated. So you use point three. So it took like one vote. And they were written in, in multiple places for office. Um, so what happens is, they've already been nominated for that seat as a Republican candidate, so they would just have to, um. Reject the Libertarian nomination, which I'm assuming, I don't want to speak for them, but I would assume they will. Because they've already been nominated. By the Republicans, and. Mark McCray is not eligible to be in the other two supervisor districts that nominated him. He's only eligible in five, so. That's. Interesting. I thought, I tried, I tried to call Mark on Friday to let him know that. But-
Did he could choose Libertarian?
He could, yeah. So now we have a basis to go off of, um, in the future primaries for Libertarians, but as you saw, there were very minimal votes cast on for that ballot, so. It takes a very small write-in.
See, the past, when they did that, it votes for two different parties, on the same party. Didn't that one vote become null and void? Then they used to call it a spoil?
No, it's basically, you get, um, like, for example, you have write-ins on the Republican ballot. So you don't add them together or win it out. You just had, let's say, I can't remember off the top of my head, but let's say you had two write-ins on the Republican side. You actually had two Republican votes for yourself. So you would have had enough. To be nominated. You could have technically been nominated as a Republican candidate, and a Democratic candidate, and then you just have to pick. Which one. But we have such a basis of total votes on the county side and the other two parties that it'd take a lot of write-ins to be. A write-in candidate. But on Libertarian, we had nothing to go off of, so. And we're not alone. There's many counties, obviously, in the same position, but. So that's all I have. I'm just, uh, need a motion to approve the canvas.
I got you.
There's a motion, and in a second, any more discussion? Now, I was in favor, signify by saying, aye, aye, opposed, wishing carries.
My three, there was. Roughly eleven percent voters that voted on- On my three, there was roughly eleven percent voters that voted out of the registered voters, it seems like. Full number of voters.
Okay. And yeah, Courtney, we'll just do the same again for meeting. All right, next item is two committee reports.
I'm going to push them short. Um, last week I, I had nothing, uh, meeting-wise. Um, I did take two phone calls, one about a drainage problem and, uh, and then another one concerning Zach over there. Um, our meeting tonight for conservation is canceled, so I have nothing on books this week.
Last week, Monday, um, access DC, met at noon at CCGP. It looks like they're looking at the week of September ninth, waiting to hear from Matt Miners. He was no longer a CC, or an employee there, but he's going to, uh, make one last trip. Wednesday afternoon of seven, one, two, open house. Thursday, went off the road with the payables. And Stephanie and I came down here on Thursday and tried to figure out how we were going to make this be worked for today. And Courtney and I did agree, a hundred and twenty square feet for the public defender office, and which office it will be on Friday.
She'll get back to me too on that.
Okay.
Um, with an updated lease, so, um, I was going to forward it to the county. And then if he's, if that is blessing, then make it an agenda item.
Is it similar square feet to the currently?
Same, exactly.
Um, Friday, I looked at the courthouse payables, and then Jean and Dalton and I met down here. And talked about the audio visual stuff. Um, so Zach is getting keys made for these doors. But they'll probably never be locked, because the postage machine's in that room back there. So as far as leaving stuff here, I mean, we'll be able to have that office, he's getting a separate key made for that one if we need to lock stuff.
So the postage machine that was on that board?
Is in that bad equipment room now. Um, I did talk to Ashley Friday at the chamber, and it looks like July twenty-sixth, I'll confirm it after this meeting. Do a, um, chamber coffee here from eight to nine. Um, bathing will be provided in the coffee bar and donuts and rolls. Um, also last week I did talk to Kimberly. And she pointed out to me that, um, in committee reports last week, Cindy questioned CCGP. She said Adam Swears and Katie Mason did provide an update on March fourth. And she has an email into Courtney to try to get on the July twenty-fourth, or, I'm sorry, June twenty-fourth or July first meeting or second quarter. She will make sure to bring that up. Um, and I was waiting for a response to see if the courts are going to participate in the open house. And Sherry Miller seems open to it, she sent me an email last night. Um, I did talk to several people about the two-mile zoning. And, um, I did get pricing on what the county charges versus what the city charges. And this morning, as soon as we're done here, Jean and I are going to run over and talk to Aaron at the city hall. He's got some ideas of how other counties do it, where he came from, Jefferson County. We're going to do more exploring on that. Tomorrow morning, um, executive meeting at Solid Waste Commission. Wednesday evening, tenure comprehensive plan steering committee meeting. Um, Friday, there's a chamber copy at Direct Center, and then RSVP recognition will launch in at Denison Friday at noon.
Okay.
I did, I did get a lot of phone calls about the two-mile deal though, awesome.
Yeah, I think, I'm, yeah, I'm knee-deep into exploring, we all are, as far as.
Basically repeat a kind of three-fourths of what's drafted last week I did as well. Also have the newspaper radio, um, Scott and Gold set up for your chamber copy. Or ribbon cutting, if you will, for July twenty-sixth. Um, I also want to make everybody aware, if you guys have any legislative priorities that you would like to send in to ISAC. They are due by June twenty-eighth, you'll be having these by end of this couple of weeks, but they go, or after that. To take a look at any of the priorities that come in through the state of Iowa with the supervisors. Um, again, I want to remind everybody, we've got our ISAC spring conference, the spring conference coming up, if you want to get registered for that. And then, um, the two-mile zoning, it is, um, obviously on the forefront for all of us. And we're working with Sarah, and we're getting all the back to the stuff before we go forward, but that will be on an agenda probably in the near future. As well as Courtney is going to send the county ordinances to Hurt. The Assistant County Attorney and Mike, I think he might be maybe having a conversation with the county attorney or assistant county attorney. And that falls under the umbrella of ordinances as well, because we are going to get those recodified, um, here soon, awesome. This coming week, I have region twelve executive board meeting and a student.
Okay, uh, I'll go back to you for these, those, and last week. But on Thursday, we had new opportunities, had a board of that week had board meeting. Uh, we based it on that, ratified the executive committee's approval of the budget revision on the head start. The garage has a building out there. Uh, we heard, heard all the head start, early head start reports, and everything's good there. And, uh, also went through, approved the community service block grant, uh, application. Approved the D O T, V O E, weatherization assistance program, and that was it on that. Uh, and then had several phone calls that week in regard to, one in particular, in our team as well. And, uh, and I kind of went through some research on that and, and did hand that over to Carrie in public health. Uh, then also I had conversations with the Oklahoma County. They were interested into what our, how it turned out, part of actually bid and what actually construction costs were to pull up on the jail. Particularly in this project, and I went over those figures with them, came with people, racked its books, basically. Um, and then also this, this last week, then I did go through, met with Scott here, which is what they left through here on Friday. And then also I had several conversations also on the two-mile zones, particularly even on the street. This week I have radio newspaper and then the meeting with Darren this morning, and that's all I have this week.
Courtney? What's your done jotting?
So I have on there, two-mile zoning, with a question mark for next week.
I'm going to guess we're finding out what.
Okay, and then I have roads, because, um, if you didn't hear, let me know, you probably have some things for me to do, so.
Um, comments from those unattended?
Motion to adjourn.
Heard the motion in a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries and we're adjourned. Sorry, folks in the back, we don't have chairs for you yet, they'll be here this week.
It's a nice boardroom, I have to admit.
If anybody's unaware, that's my mother and my nephew.
Actually, when I think about it. Let me check where you're at, symbol, in here, like.
Oh.
Like, you, this guy, you know the city council does, that they have a table.
I think that that is going to kind of perhaps be what that table is, is going to be a presenter's table, but, um.
But I get what he's asking, because he wants to kind of maybe sit back in the corner.
And I'm sure Sarah would agree.
Instead of having your laptop on your.
I mean, and I can make do, and, I mean, I, I like using YouTube, so I said, you know how it would be in the end, but.
We're going back to hopefully YouTube next week, but I, um, so that table right there will fit three chairs, do we?
But if they're going to be sitting there, we're the presenters.
Well, I was going to say, we let two for media and then one for presenter, I don't know.
What do you mean, he doesn't have any special tables? I think Sarah and I have four of them.
What?
Do we have a little table in front of us?
We don't really have quite a few tables, but I don't know if you want to put a table in here that matches the other tables? Or the ones we have are more of those gray plastic tables.
Why don't you let us work on that, and we'll come up with something, but I, I understand what you're saying.
Sarah, don't, if you don't, it's fine.
Well, you just keep coming once it's online.
As we go back on.
I mean, I prefer, I like being here.
We like having you here.
Will you keep coming, Sarah, when they're, um, when we go live back on YouTube?
If I'm still planning about meetings?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, yeah, no, uh, Nathan, we'll talk with, I think, I think he's coming up here this after, right after this meeting, right? Talking to myself, yeah, I love that.
Oh, got you, got you. It's not, not a priority, just be nice, call you, I think.
I get it, call you, I like.
And you're not going to take credit for being the vote that, uh.
Libertarian?
Yeah, they, and you're not going to take.
It's up to Eugene how you want to do it.
You guys can come up here, Dad.
Got the reason I'm not preparing, it's been like forty-two years ago.
I just thought, when I, when I.